Good evening. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's six o'clock, January 31st. This is a meeting of the Livingston County Board of Commissioners. If you would join me in a moment of silent reflection before we get going. Thank you. Thank you. If you would join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll.
Commissioner Vaca Gary.
Here.
Commissioner Griffith.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Reader.
Here.
Commissioner Helsnerman is absent. Commissioner Dric.
Here.
Commissioners Ajax.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
Coram is present.
Thank you. Item number five is correspondence. This evening, we have correspondence from Marquette County, a resolution supporting the cause of protecting democracy, promoting policies that protect access to the ballot for voters and building on progress of the 2020 elections. Looking for a motion to receive and place on file.
So moved. Griffith.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Griffith, support by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion passes. Item number six is called to the public. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the Board of Commissioners. The rules were modified a bit at the start of the year, so I'll go over and repeat them briefly. If you want to address the Board of Commissioners, we ask that you fill out a card. There was a card at the little stand in the vestibule prior to entering and give the card to the clerk who will turn and give it to the Chair of the Board, and we'll call you up that way. And then if you're on Zoom, we ask that you raise your hand. We'll start with the call of public here in the room. You have three minutes. If... Did you get any cards, Clerk Hundley?
No, I don't have any.
All right. I'll give a little pass here if you didn't know, because I see somebody looks like they wanted to address the board. All right. If you just... So we'll have a little... Yeah, we'll have a grace period for a few meetings. So go ahead if you would like.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I just wanted to throw out a little bit of my opinion here because I know for the emergency committee, you're going to be...
If you can give us your name and...
Sorry, Alisa Davis. I'm from the city of Brighton. And I know that John King is on that list of people for this emergency committee. I'm also aware of the fact that he was asked to resign February 26th, I believe it was, and then just the other day, he decided to end his employment at WHMI. Here's my thought, is that on this emergency committee, it really appears that you bring in people that are affiliated, whether it be the fire department or police department, and they're all very educated and connected in some way to emergencies if and when they transpire in the county. My thought, my perception was that Mr. King was part of this committee because of his position at WHMI, because he was the news director, which is no longer. So my suggestion is to maybe take him, set him aside, and maybe take someone else who's affiliated with that radio station, because it is our county's radio station. And that way, when an emergency happens, you have a direct connect to someone, you know, on that committee that's affiliated with our communication portion, which is WHMI. That's all I wanted to say. I'm just hoping that you'll consider maybe someone else.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, anybody else in the room? I see one hand raised on Zoom.
Hi. My name's Lori Cowan from Unadilla Township. And there were just two things I wanted to address this evening. First, I believe the broadband surveys were to be turned in on December 31st, by the 31st, and I was hoping that we'd soon be able to hear some kind of an update with the results or the next steps or a timeframe. And then second, more than several years back, the county, I believe, obtained a grant to provide the entire county with a fiber optics network to connect the fire and police departments to the 911 dispatch to help ensure vital, better connections. Unfortunately, Unadilla Township still remains the only community that never received the lines, and therefore, our police and fire department did not get the benefit. The rest of Livingston did. Our little township was easily forgotten and hasn't been brought up in years. So I'm hoping this year you will find a solution. I'm suggesting maybe you could use some of the American Rescue Plan monies as well as part of the general fund to finally complete the project because Unadilla deserves it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Sherri LaRue.
Hello, Board members. Happy New Year. I just wanted to reinforce what Alissa just said with three characters, this resolution approving appointments to the Livingston County Local Emergency Planning Committee under Emergency Management. I've had the privilege of listening to several presentations by Therese Cremont, and I, as a citizen of this county, take great comfort that she has awesome plans in place. And again, as I look at this list of people, I think that it's not so much the people, but it's their affiliation with either an employee or an employer or an association that they belong to. And I would encourage you to seek a different person for the WHMI position so that we don't have a broken link, if you will, in communications in case there is an emergency. You guys have a blessed night and thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else on Zoom wishing to address the board. So I'm gonna go ahead and close the first call of public, reminding everybody that there is a second call of the public, albeit it is a shorter duration, two minutes, for citizens to speak at the end of the... Towards the end of the meeting. Next up on the agenda, item number seven is approval of minutes dated January 18th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. Gross.
Support. Plank.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Plank. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight, there are no tabled items from previous meetings, so we'll move on to item number nine, which is approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Zajac, support by Commissioner Dric. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? We have an agenda. Item number 10, reports from commissioners, opportunity for commissioners to share information with the rest of the board. Are there any reports from commissioners tonight? Commissioner Zajac.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two brief reports, or one report with two parts, if you will. The first one, I think my colleagues know of my involvement and Commissioner Plank's involvement with a group of interested community members about what it means to have education in our county and the connection between the operations of the county and education. And as a part of that, we've had the opportunity to hear from many stakeholders in the county about the different educational programs. And one thing I know that I'm very proud of is that we're taking a step forward as a county to, I would say, facilitate a job shadow day with Howell Public Schools. There was a request that went out about a couple of weeks ago to all commissioners as well as to department heads, and there's been several takers. It's a new kind of figure-it-out-as-we-go type of program. So I just wanted to highlight the departments and the electeds that have taken interest in this program. It's not even really a program, an opportunity, I guess I should say. The Communications Department, the Treasurer's Office, the Clerk's Office, Administrator Byrd, Commissioners Ajax, Commissioner Plank, Commissioner Smith, the Sheriff's Office, Fiscal Services, Register of Deeds, Health Department, Emergency Management, Veteran Services, Judge Baines' chambers, Facility Services, LETS Transportation, the Public Defender's Office, Central Dispatch, Equalization, Judge Murphy's chambers, as well as MSU Extension. So this will be the first of hopefully, what I would in any ways hope for, of many opportunities for the county to facilitate job shadowing. You know, we talk a lot about the future of the county, the employment. For one, it's a great opportunity to show young people what we do as a county beyond just the public meetings, but everything that makes us tick. And I've plugged the Drain Commissioner, don't worry, even though, you know, we get greasy in your office. I think there's a lot of blue collar kids that would like to do that and play with your heavy machinery. So... And I know Judge Reader recently partook in that activity too, so I'd love to hear her experience. But nonetheless, looking forward to this as a great opportunity for our kids as well as for the county to hopefully plant some seeds about future employment opportunities. And the other item, remain very interested in the broadband activities of the county. I've participated in several meetings with our IT Director as well as Administrator Byrd, one trip to Traverse City to see how they run their broadband service, which is one type of model that exists up there. And then a trip to a company locally that has some ideas on how we could take advantage of our opportunity here as a county with our resources for expanding the broadband access. Very excited to see an initial plot, if you will, of responses from some of the data that was collected through the broadband survey. And it's as we expected, the western part of the county is woefully under-equipped with this technology and this opportunity. So hopeful that these meetings will continue and that we will see an opportunity to continue to progress this forward, taking advantage of the resources that have been allocated to the county. And hopeful also that the state will support us with their additional resources and excess funds as we've been hearing about. So that is my report. I'd be happy to answer your questions if the Chair would allow or if anyone's interested. Thank you.
Any questions from my colleagues or Commissioners Ajax? Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else with reports this evening? I've got a couple of things I want to share with the board. First is on... I'm gonna move forward and do some... I'll look, see at... This is a procedural thing regarding resolutions that are brought up in personnel. And some of the resolutions that are brought up in personnel only go to the Personnel Committee, and thereby, the entire board does not get a chance to vote on them. And that was a policy that's been in place for a number of years. And so I think, you know, my thinking is that since personnel comprises, costs comprise about 60% of the budget, I think it's the right thing to do to allow the entire board to chime in on some of these personnel questions that previously just went to the Personnel Committee. So that is one thing. The second item is in call of public, and I mentioned this just a bit ago. You know, I'll be mentioning at every meeting, you know, the new requirements to fill out the card, to give them to the clerk, and then to present them, you know, to the Chair of either the full board or the individual committee. I think the transition period, as you saw tonight, we're not here to shut anybody down, but we want to make sure that we get into the new practice as soon as we can. So I use this as an opportunity as a reminder. I also wanted to mention two other things. One is I received, and I think everybody on the board received an email from Sheriff Murphy regarding the stellar performance of Deputy Marino. And I've met Deputy Marino in the past on some training opportunities that he was teaching on. I think the world of him, as I think the world of anybody who's in a first responder. And I just wanted to recognize publicly here that I know I speak for the entire board in expressing our appreciation for, you know, going above and beyond like Deputy did. So thank you. And then finally, it is my honor here to recognize one of our... Well, she is not an employee, she's an elected official with five years of service to our county. Our Clerk, Betsy Hunley, I have her service award that I would like to present her.
Well, that's the majority of the year.
No, it's... You know, Betsy does a great job, not just here in the chambers, but for the county as a whole. And it's always nice to know that if I get in a little bit of a bind, I can't remember exactly what the Roberts rules were, that Betsy is there to set me straight. So I appreciate all that she does for the county. Thank you very much. That's all that I had. So I'm going to go ahead and close the reports and move on to item number 11, which is resolutions for consideration. And the... As we, as I had mentioned in a prior board meeting, resolutions that have been introduced in committee. I am happy to have the presenter represent the information if any single commissioner wants that. But if commissioners are comfortable and don't need the presentation tonight, then we'll dispense with that. So I've asked on Resolution 2022-01-008... Well, actually, let me first ask for a motion to open discussion.
So moved. Dric. Support. Gross.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Dric, support by Commissioner Gross. Would anybody like the background presentation? Hearing none. Are there any questions for Ms. Cremonti? Looks like none. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion passes. Resolution 2022-01-009, it's a resolution approving appointments to Livingston County Local Emergency Planning Committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Commissioners Ajax, support by Commissioner Plank. Are there any commissioners that would like the background presentation on this one?
Yes.
Commissioner... So that would be Ms. Cremonti, if you would fill us in on the background on this resolution.
Absolutely. And just so you know, I'm glad I got unmuted because I'm gonna want to do an amendment to this as well. As your speaker brought up, we did lose a member and his position on the original list that was presented. But what this is, is this goes along with the Superfund Amendment and Resolution, or Reauthorization Act of 1986, what we refer to as TARA. It was enacted by Congress on October 17th, 1986 and contains Title III, it's the Emergency Planning Community Right to Know Act of 1986. What Title III establishes are requirements that federal, state, local governments and industry must implement regarding emergency planning and community rights to know reporting on hazardous and toxic materials and chemicals. So pursuant to that, the Michigan Citizen Community Emergency Response Coordination Council designated Livingston County as a local emergency planning district, has did a local emergency planning committee, what we like to call the LEPC for Livingston County. And in that, the council, excuse me, after recommendation by the Board of Commissioners, members may include elected and state, local officials, law enforcement representatives, civil defense, emergency management coordinators, fire departments, public and private health representatives, utilities and/or transportation representatives, EMS, central dispatch, hospital, local environmental representatives, community groups, academia, media, owners, operators of Title III facilities, in other words, our factory owners and other members that can contribute. So on this very large list of about, it was 64, it will be now 63 since we're going to ask that somebody be removed. We get together quarterly, and we literally discuss different things that are concerned to the public. So one of the best examples I can give is when we had an issue at Diamond Chrome a couple of years back before COVID. We had a vapor intrusion that impacted the community and the neighborhood in particular. And this was a discussion at our LEPC. Of course, we pulled in health officials. We went over discussions, recommendations by Eagle and EPA. And again, it was community right to know. Diamond Chrome was very forthcoming with that. We get Sarah Title III report from them every year. So that was one of those moments that the LEPC was very important. We discuss other things, smaller things throughout the meeting. They usually last an hour to two hours, and we hold them quarterly. Right now, I would like to ask that the list be amended. We did lose John King, who is our media representative. We will be looking to replace that media representative. And as a couple of our speakers at Call of the Public did mention, that media is a very important part to keeping our community safe because they help us get the word out for safety and emergencies to the public. So we will be looking for that replacement. It's a little fresh, so we're not certain who that will be yet, but certainly, we will invite another person to take that seat. And I will say, we were very sorry to lose John. He was a very good partner through the years and was a... He had a very iconic voice, which was very calming during an emergency if we had to ask him to put information out.
Any questions of Commissioner Plank?
So with that recent departure from WHMI, I would like to make a motion to amend the resolution to strike John King from the LEPC committee.
So there's a motion to amend the resolution striking John King from the committee member. Is there a second?
Second. Dric.
Second by Commissioner Dric. Any discussion on the amendment?
I just have a question.
I saw Commissioner Smith.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
Does the replacement need to come before us or can we approve a standing position to be filled by the Chair of the committee?
You can do that, sir. You can approve the seat to be filled, and I would recommend that. Also, I should point out that these are public meetings, so they are open to the public, and the meetings are published on our Livingston County Emergency Management webpage under the Meetings page section.
The... I would withhold, if you want to make a motion to amend further after we vote on the amendment on the floor, that would be, I mean, that would be the proper protocol. Other questions on the amendment? All those in favor of amending the resolution striking John King's name off the list signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion or amendment passes? Any further discussion or amendments for this resolution?
I would just request a further amendment, suggesting the Chairman of the Committee be able to fill the open position with the media, with a media designate.
There's a... Commissioner Smith has offered an amendment providing the committee chair, that would be Therese Cremonti, with the ability to appoint somebody from the media to fill the spot. Is there a second?
Support. Griffith.
Support by Commissioner Griffith. Any discussion, questions from colleagues? Commissioners Ajax.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I think I have a little bit of a problem with just giving an open invitation. I, of course, trust Ms. Cremonti's input, but this communications role I would see as one of the most critical on this committee. So, you know, even though, you know, Ms. Cremonti and her team get to vet, I think that we need to have some level of input. I mean, otherwise, I don't know why we would have gone through the process of having to vote on all of these. We could have simply delegated that duty to. So I'm not gonna support an open kind of invitation, so to speak, to allow the Chair to appoint. I think that this role is so critical. It's not one to say the Chief of the Heartland Police, Fire Department, that, to me, is very defined. But just to leave it open without any other guardrails, so to speak, I'm not going to support that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none. We have an amendment to allow the committee chair to appoint the media person. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Let me get a roll. Were there three nays? The amendment passes. So going back to the main motion, is there any further discussion? Commissioner Dric.
Since number 27 on the list is a handsome, good-looking guy, I'm gonna have to abstain from voting. It's me.
What if it was an ugly guy, would you abstain?
Well, we're not taking votes on that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
One abstention.
Commissioner Dric abstains. Motion passes. Let's see here. The next one is... Yes. Oh. Item C, Resolution 2022-01-010, it's a resolution authorizing the Sheriff's Office in the county of Livingston to apply for the State of Michigan Fiscal Year 22 First Responder Training and Recruitment Grants Funding. Is there a motion?
So moved. Gross.
Support. Griffith.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Griffith. Would ask my colleagues if there's any of my colleagues would like the background information. How about any questions for my colleagues for the sheriff? How about a vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Next resolution, 2022-01-011, it's a resolution authorizing the creation of a second engineering surveyor position. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Plank, support by Commissioner Zajac. Would any of my colleagues like the background presentation from our Drain Commissioner? Hearing none. Any questions for our Drain Commissioner?
If you don't mind, I have a keynote for the board. Commissioner, if you could, you asked about the process by which we bill and do the special assessment.
Yes.
I did this to you before today, but it didn't quite work out. So just to give you some background on how this works.
Thank you.
I had our staff do a printout of all these dots on the first page or all the... It probably went live with City Works. So that started about eight months ago. So those have been the individual projects that we conducted over the last eight months. And those might range from something where we're replacing a hole in a tile, or it could be a two-month project cleaning out a... Or it could be a two-month project cleaning out a drain. So some of these are very linear projects. They may run a mile or two, but they're represented by dots, the blue being open ditch and the reds being various size of enclosed drain. So that's what that's about. The second page is a map showing one of our drainage districts in Heartland, showing you one of the projects that we did last year. There is that we may have excavated or cleaned catch basins. And then I have a copy of one of the crew's time sheets showing all the various districts over the course of one pay period that they worked on. And you can see they write down whether it's a trailer. Pete is not a person, that's our Peterbilt dump truck, chainsaws, personal protective equipment, anything we use. That gets, there's a per-hour cost associated with that that gets put back on the district. There's an output showing Heartland Country Club, the work that was done over a period, how much that totaled. And then the last page is just is a sample assessment roll showing how ultimately at the end of the drain year, this is assessed in the portion that goes to the various entities, Livingston County, Heartland Township, and then the rest to the people within that subdivision. So kind of from start to finish, just to give you an idea of how the process works.
Thank you. Any questions for the Drain Commissioner? I have one, so don't go away. I, so the expenses are tallied up and that it, is it, is there a board on each one of these drain districts or how does that work?
No, the the intra-county drains, so the drains in which the entire watershed or contributing portion of land to that drain is wholly within the county. Then I am basically, I guess you would consider each one of these are public corporations, so consider me like the mayor. So I'm the decision maker. As soon as any of those districts extend beyond the borders of Livingston County, then it brings in that Drain Commissioner from that county and a member of the Ag Department at the state as the tiebreaker. So it's a three-member board. And there are some other chapters that, especially we get in wastewater, some larger drains, Chapter 20s that a board is convened. But on the ones that are wholly located within the county, I'm the decision maker on those.
Thank you. Any other questions? So we have a motion and support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Item, or the next resolution is 2022-01-012, it's a resolution approving appointments to the Livingston Leadership Council on Aging. Is there a motion?
So moved Gross.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Plank. Any questions from my colleagues? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12 on the agenda are claims, 12A is claims dated January 31st, 2022. Is there a motion to approve the claims?
So moved Griffiths.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Griffiths, support by Commissioner Zajac. Any questions from Commissioners? All those in favor of approving the claim signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. There's a next resolution is for the payables dated January 7th through January 21st, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved Gross.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, support by Commissioner Zajac. Any questions on the payables? All those in favor of approving the payables signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 13 is our second and final Call of the Public. This is a two-minute Call of the Public. It's anybody in the room wishing to, I see one guy with his hand up.
I thought I was going to have an opportunity to address my resolution and I was going to take that opportunity to say what I'm going to say. So I'll do it, Call the Public, Sheriff Mike Murphy, 150 South Hailandeway, Howell, Michigan. Two things, congratulations Commissioner Zajac for being able to plug the Drain Commissioner. Nicely done. And, but, just a quick comment and a quick history, this is one of the disadvantages, I guess, of being around for a long time to Ms. Collins, what she brought up in the original Call of the Public. So the county never really received any grant money for any of the fiber work that was done. What happened is we received Homeland Security money. And when the Homeland Security money was flowing fast and furious, that money is decided on by public safety. And half of that money is specifically designated for law enforcement and the other half can be used for public safety as a whole. And what we decided as a group at that particular time, and this goes back about 12, 15 years, was to build the fiber out, to do the fiber project. And as much as we would love to have gotten to Unadilla, it just didn't work out that way. And we ran out of money. And now it's to the point, so emergency services in the county voted to spend all of Homeland Security money for a number of years to build the fiber project out. Now we just get peanuts. I think the law enforcement portion countywide for not just my shop, but all of police, I think is like 40 grand or something like that. It was big money at one time. So just so you understand where that money came from for the fiber project. And in the, in the big scope of things, what was going to happen was there was some built-in redundancies there where that was going to go through Unadilla and hook up to Stockbridge down in Ingham County and then Jackson and too, so that, but just didn't work. So anyways, that's it.
You didn't fill out your card.
Yeah.
No, I never said my address. Do I need my address? Brian Junk, 350 West Caledonia, Howell, Michigan. I want to welcome this board back and and wish you a less tumultuous year. So get the fingers crossed on that. One thing I've seen a lot of, it's really too bad, is the way this board has been addressed by a number of people. And so for some, I think it's almost a feeling as if you are the most threatening, it should, that should be the way you should vote in their direction. And that's really too bad. I have a different policy in my office. It's that when people get to threatening, I employ my anti-terrorism policy and I usually go in the opposite direction. There's no need for this. It's surprising me that we have people that consider themselves conservative that have acted in that manner. So I want to call them out. They can send me all the nasty messages, but, you know, kudos for going through what you have. I want to remind you, it could be worse. I could be sitting up there with you or God forbid, Murphy might even be up there. So it always could get worse. But anyway, I haven't been shy in voicing some of my opposition, but it's never personal. And so I hope everybody knows that. And sometimes you might have to give the same back to me. So I want to say is that yeah, maybe I sound like I bite, but I have the utmost respect for all of you. And so with that said, I spent my day today with a person I call the Genghis Khan of pies, my mother, who's the sweetest lady, except when she's making pies. And I was only entrusted with peeling and that was tough. So I have some of my mother's home baked pies and she has been making pies forever. You know, she like, she can feel it, the dough, she communes with it, she talks to it. And I don't know how she does it, but they're great pies. And I have two in the back room. Still here, the guy with the gun convinced me he gets my piece. So I can't argue. But I have two pies I'll bring over to the back board chambers for board members to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
What resolutions are coming up?
Yeah. Anybody else in the room? I see on Zoom, Ms. Cromanti.
Yeah, I just wanted to address again Lori from Unadilla on her first Call of the Public too. And I'm going to just echo what Sheriff Murphy said. We threw everything we could at it. The last time we were able to do anything, it came out of 2017 funds. And for one mile, one mile of fiber to get to the Putnam Township Fire Department, it cost us over $50,000. And that's all that we had. And that was a great undertaking. I guess what concerns me is we have never forgotten about Unadilla. We never do. We support them every chance we can. We get them radios or other equipment that they need for the Fire Department, the Police Department, and certainly to protect the citizens. We want to do as much wraparound for them as we can. And it is my greatest hope, and I think everybody else in the county, that we can not only move that fiber down to Unadilla, but we can do what we call complete the circuit. Because it wasn't just Unadilla. It was supposed to come back up through Fellerville and then back around through Heartland and connect down to Brighton so that we had a loop in that fiber. Unfortunately, like I say, those funds dried up very, very quickly and unexpectedly, and they've never replenished to that point where we could complete those through the grant process. So it's on the radar. It was one of the very first things that came to the top for discussion after we found out we are getting the American Rescue Plan funds. And it's my greatest hope that we will be able to complete the circuit here in Livingston County. But I just, I just wanted to know, we don't we love our Gregory and Unadilla Township residents, along with all the others within our county. They're all very important to us, as are their citizens.
Thank you very much. Lori and Lori Cowan, if, what's up next?
Just wanted to thank Teresa for her comments. That's all. I appreciate you still thinking of us. And I know you've done a lot for Unadilla as far as radios and that. I just wanted to bring up that because I know Putnam Township did receive some of your general funds to complete their circuit. So thank you for still thinking about it and hopefully we'll get good news in the soon future. Thanks.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else with their hand raised. So I'm going to go ahead and close the Call of the Public and ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved Griffiths.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Griffiths, support by Commissioner Zajac. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? I didn't think so.